This evening, we will have public works inclusive of recreation, administration, and engineering, streets, parks, and cemetery, snow and ice, traffic signals, water enterprise, as well as city clerk, city council, license commission, and elections. Tonight, we'll begin with public works, recreation. Ms. LaRose, thanks for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
We'll begin with recreation, personal services account with a subtotal of $106,180. Questions from councillors? Seeing none, we'll move to recreation expense with a subtotal of $20,225. Questions from councillors? Seeing none, we'll move to... Councillor Green.
On the special events line item, you requested $8,000 but got funding of $1,000. How is that going to impact the special events that the Rec Department does?
Well, it depends. The special events that we do are different every year. Our goal is to do a larger fundraising campaign than we usually do to supplement that, and hopefully it won't have much effect at all. But it could affect some of the newer programming we're planning, you know, different movie nights or activities in the parks for kids. But for the most part, it shouldn't affect the primary function of what we do.
All right. Do you have money in that account that you can use until... for this fiscal year?
I believe we have a little more than $1,000 remaining in that account right now. I intend to use it to help support the start of the summer season. So, you know, the opening of the pools and the activities for the kids in the beginning of July, it'll be used to prepare supplies for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions from councillors on recreation expense? Seeing none, we'll move to pool and splash park with a subtotal of $68,332. Councillor Caddy.
Who's maintaining the pool, the piping system, and the pumps?
We hire a company every year to come and service them called Corinos.
So they're winterized properly?
They are supposed to be. We'll find out if they were in a couple of weeks.
And if they're not, are they responsible?
I intend to hold them responsible if they're not, since they did a massive repair on these pumps.
Yep. Thank you.
Any further questions from councillors regarding pool and splash park? Councillor Clark.
I asked this earlier, Nate, about the second, if you will, pool that we have on Bonusnak Road. I know that's not under our domain, but that, I mean, just a little history. Didn't they just redo that whole thing a couple of years ago, and now they've completely ripped it up again?
I can speak to it from what they've told me and from my memory of that, so I can't, you know, I wouldn't take it as exact fact. But from what I've been told, there was a study done on safety in state pools after an incident that happened a few years ago in Framingham. And so the state completed their study earlier this year and are now renovating almost every state pool in the system to have a lower pool depth and to not have waiting pools. At the time when I spoke to them about this, which was probably six months ago, they were expecting to have the pool reopened in time for their regular season this summer. I can look into that further for you if you'd like an update on when that pool will be opening.
I've just seen it from the road. It looks like they've still got a lot of work to do.
I can call them tomorrow.
That'll be great. Thank you.
Any further questions regarding pool and splash park? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. LaRose.
Thank you. Have a nice night.
You as well. We'll resume with administration and engineering. Commissioner Laxo, good evening. We're on page 25, councillors. Begin with engineering, administration and engineering personal services with a subtotal of $382,386. Questions from councillors? Seeing none, we'll move to administration and engineering expense with a subtotal of Questions from councillors? Include administration and engineering... Does animal control fall under there? Councillor Joseph.
Did you find another source for your engineering doc scanning index file? Is that what it is, that you didn't get that amount of money, or is that something that you still have a need for?
Yeah, we definitely still have a need for it. We had originally tried to get it funded about three years ago. But I'll be presenting a request in a couple of weeks to have that funded through fiscal year 16 funds, you know, because we do have a surplus in a number of our accounts this year, just due to it's been a strange year budget-wise for us.
Further questions from councillors? Seeing none, we'll move to page 26. We'll begin with cemetery. Cemetery personal services with a subtotal of $228,124. Councillor Green.
The principal clerk position, requested but not funded, so is that a person that you were intending to hire and can't hire, or left, or what happened to that person?
That would have been an additional position that the cemetery and their trustees were requesting. Basically, they wanted to set up a, you know, program using software to track all the different grave sites so people could go on and look up, you know, the history of their loved ones, but so that principal clerk would have been working with that. Plus, at the bottom of the page, there was $60,000 worth of software, but it's a nice idea, but we just didn't think we could justify the expense.
So the only person then up at the cemetery will be the superintendent?
Yes, the only person in the office, plus over the summer she has an intern.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any further questions regarding cemetery personal services? Councillor Joseph.
What was the need for the light, late, meow laborer?
Again, that was another new position that was requested by the cemetery and the trustees. We just felt that, you know, with not a whole lot of activity going on in the cemetery in the wintertime especially, that it was hard to justify a full-time person all year round. So we try to fill in, in the summer, with temporary help.
So that's the plan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll move to cemetery expense with a subtotal of $63,105. Questions from councillors? Councillor Green.
Is the mausoleum roof fixed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that was completed last year.
Okay. And with no issues going through the winter or spring or anything?
No, it's been dry.
All right. Thank you.
Further questions for cemetery expense? Seeing none, we'll move to highway. On page 27, highway personal services with a subtotal of $840,303. Questions from councillors?
Yeah, there are a couple of things I just wanted to point out about that.
Please?
You know, every year, that account is underfunded by $100,000 that we have to make up, more or less by selling our services to CDBG or Chapter 90 or something else. So that, you know, for the eight months of construction season that we have every year, you know, that takes about four men full-time, you know, that have to work on special projects as opposed to, you know, routine activities in the streets. In addition, we have a major problem with all the workers we have on workers' comp right now. There are five of them now. Most of them have been out for about 17 months, and they're split between cemeteries, parks, garage, and streets. But just because most of the workers are in streets, you know, we can't leave the cemetery with only one person there, so we take people from streets to work there. We can't leave the parks with only a couple people, so we take people from streets to work in the parks. So it's, in the end, it's the streets that suffer. So, you know, we have a hard time getting routine activities done, whether it's rebuilding catch basins. It can take, you know, a couple of years now, and they should be done quickly, or, you know, it slows down our pothole filling operation. We should have two crews out there, but most often now it's just one. So the problem is, somebody goes on workers' comp, and it seems like it takes forever for them to get diagnosed and surgery. I mean, one of them just had surgery last week, and even though he'd been out already for about 15 months, so it just drags on and on and on. There are a couple who, it was finally decided that they have to go on permanent disability, but even that process takes a good six to 12 months to go through. And during this whole period, you know, we're paying out of our budget as if the people are out there, but, you know, it's just money down the drain as far as our budget goes. So it's been a killer over the last year and a half or so.
Commissioner Laxo, can you tell me, without getting into any specifics here, but are Human Resources and Legal working with you to ensure that we're following all the proper protocols and that we're approaching, you know, workers' comp appropriately?
Yeah, I mean, we do meet with Human Resources, the Workers' Comp representative for the city, Cook &amp; Sons, also the city's insurance attorney, and we plan to have another meeting in early June to try to move these things along. If at all possible, I'd just like to see another way of funding these positions while they're, you know, while they're inactive.
Absolutely.
Just so we can get the work done.
And just to summarize, again, it's five...
Five right now, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Dina Tally.
So is this a normal occurrence in your area? Do we normally have, by normal, I mean every year, we see a budget that gives a listing of how many people it covers, but on any given year, is it fair to say that a third or a quarter of your staff in this budget is not out there because of these issues?
No, this hasn't happened before.
Okay.
We would have occasionally one person out, you know, with injuries, but these all came at once.
Now, I'm just spitballing here, so I don't want to alarm anybody, but are the, how many parks employees do we have?
Four.
And cemetery?
Three.
For me, it sounds counterproductive moving street guys to the parks and the cemeteries. I would prefer the opposite, moving the parks and the cemetery guys to the streets. And where I'm going with this is, first off, I want to know, just out of curiosity, can those seven men, can they work the streets in the streets division, or do they not have the certification or the licensing to do so? And if they didn't, can we pay for them to get that certificate? My point, Mr. Laxo, is to, I know you've always been understaffed, and it's even exacerbated further because of these injuries that occur and things that happen on the job. I feel the seven men that are working in the cemeteries and the parks, considering they have an enormous responsibility as it is, and we're told every year that we don't have enough bodies to cover all those parks, like there's over 40 of them, and they keep growing, and we have like 12 or 13 cemeteries. Is it... First question is, can these seven, can they seamlessly transition over the highway division? Like tomorrow?
Yeah, they're pretty much interchangeable.
Okay, so where I'm going with this, as an idea, and I'm not suggesting this be done, just a thought, is potentially to bolster your ranks in highway, not lay anybody off, not talk about layoffs or anything, bolster your ranks in highway, since these guys can seamlessly transition over. Maybe the city should start looking into private maintenance of our parks and cemeteries and move these seven to highway. Where I think, not to diminish what they're doing, but I've been here nine years, and I have heard endlessly the enormous constraints you are under staff-wise, more exacerbated this year because of the issues going on, that I just feel like that would be a huge boon to you and to the superintendent of streets, to get seven more guys immediately on the streets fixing potholes, doing pave work, doing these projects, and maybe contract out the services for the maintenance of those parks and cemeteries. So I'm not recommending that we remove any personnel. I'm saying if these guys can walk right into the highway, maybe we should look into a reallocation of our current resources, because that would add seven people to Mr. Withington's staff that I think would be a tremendous help. Just a thought I have. And it's not to say that the parks aren't getting maintained and the cemeteries aren't... I used to work in the cemeteries. I know the men that work in these divisions, very hard workers, which is why I think they would serve the city just as well in highway as a thought, to alleviate the staffing issues you continuously have, whether there's people out or not, and look into what kind of savings we could realize by having a private landscaper take care, or private companies take care of these parks and cemeteries, and increase your staff on the highway. How many do you have, 20, 25?
There are 18 in the streets, plus the people in the garage.
Okay, so then this would bolster your street division by over a third. So, just a thought, because my concern thinking about this idea was, are these guys not trained to be in the street division? And if they are, it's something to look into, is my opinion. I'm not advocating it be done immediately or in the next year, but something to look into as a way to alleviate this recurring staffing shortage that we have. Thank you.
Councillor Green.
I just want to make sure that I understood correctly, the CDBG reimbursement of $100,000, that is for salaries?
Yes, it's for labor.
That pays for labor. And I do just have to reiterate that with five employees out, so that brings your staff down to 14 and a half people, the amount of work that you are able to get done is commendable. I mean, every time that I forward a request for a pothole or a berm, it gets done. So I applaud the effort of you and all of your staff, knowing that every year that you are understaffed and overworked. So I appreciate the hard work that your staff does.
Okay, thanks. I'll let them know.
Thank you.
Councillor Boishman.
Yeah.
Councillor Joseph.
I just, where was I going? I got wrapped up in that last conversation. I lost it. Give me a minute.
You're the last one on the list, so...
Yeah, I know. Go ahead.
Okay. All right. Seeing no further, we'll move to highway services and supplies with a subtotal of $608,000. Questions from councillors? Councillor Green.
The contracted services under the streetlights. It's been quite substantial in years past, and I see that we're down to $110,000 for that. Can you explain why? I mean, we don't hardly ever see numbers go down in the budget, but I'm wondering why that number went down.
Yeah, I mean, that's the line item for electricity for the streetlights. So there, we did two things over the last five years or so. The first was, we bought the streetlights from Unitil, and so that was a big savings. And then the second part was converting them to LEDs.
Okay. And that, is that process done now?
All the lights have been converted. Now we're just in the final stages of getting the network up and running so that we can, you know, monitor the streetlights, and then we'll know which streetlights are out and get them fixed.
Okay. So requests, if requests are still coming in from residents for streetlights, is it now under the DPW to take care of that, or are we still working with that specific contractor to do that?
Yeah. We hire a maintenance contractor to do the maintenance work for us. It's the same company that installed the LED streetlights.
Okay. So I was going to continue to forward, write forward to you, and then you forward onto them?
Yeah, we send them a list every Wednesday, and they're supposed to take care of the list the following week.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councillor Joseph.
Here we go. Can we have the mayor and maybe the city attorney give us a presentation in an executive session on the workman's comp issues specifically to what Mr. Laxo's going through, but also, you know, an overview? They've been around for five months now. They should have a good handle on what's going on with workman's comp, so, just so that we can all understand the issues, because it really is, seems to be dragging on too long. There should be the light duty, there should be some other way of having these people perform work for us, even though they're on workman's comp. So...
Councillor, I believe we actually did submit a request, and we'll confirm and make sure that we have such a presentation. It'll be outside of the budget.
Right.
But certainly happy to accommodate that request. Any further questions from councillors regarding highway services and supplies? Councillor Boishman.
Lenny, back to streetlights. Do we have it set up yet where we can dim the lights in certain areas to save more money?
Not yet. We're almost there. You know, all the hardware has been set up, so now the, our consultant is putting all the data into the software package. You know, there are about 3,000 streetlights, and the location of each one has to be entered, so they're in the middle of doing that. And then hopefully in a couple of weeks, that'll be taken care of, and then we'll get trained on how to use the software, and then we can, we'll also be able to adjust the wattage of the lights if we want.
And then my final question. I noticed that the LED lights clink straight down. They don't illuminate way out, because we call it light pollution. My question is, when I was reading up on these LED lights, there are some areas where people walk a lot, you really can't see on the sidewalk, because the lights are pointing down. They're not really on the sidewalk. They're shining on the street. Are we going to change the system where it's going to be a little bit brighter, I mean, a bigger head up there, so you can get part of the sidewalk?
I mean, in most of the city, we're just going with the Cobra headlights the way they are. I mean, we can adjust the wattages if necessary, but for example, on the New River Street project, those aren't going to be Cobra headlights. Those will be shorter, more decorative lights that will light the sidewalk in addition to the street, because they want to promote pedestrian traffic down there. Same with Main Street. There are two sets of lights up there, out there now.
Yeah, I already know that. We always talk about that.
Yeah. From what I understand, the decorative lights were intended to light the sidewalk, and the overhead Cobra lights were intended to light the street.
Because the only reason why I asked you this question is, a while ago, probably a year ago, we voted on to add more lights onto the Water Street Bridge in that area, because we said it was too dark. And then I went down and I seen some of the lights were out, and I said, geez, why don't we just widen, I thought, why don't we just widen the head up there, so they have the Cobra head, a bigger head, so you can light up the sidewalk so the people can see.
Councillor, these are all valid questions, but don't necessarily pertain to the budget. Do you have a question that directly impacts the...
Oh, you're tough tonight, Mike.
I am tough.
All right, that's all I have to ask.
Thank you, Councillor Boishman. Any further questions regarding highway services and supplies? Page 28. Seeing none, we'll move to highway garage and repair for a subtotal of $409,708. Questions from councillors? Seeing none, we'll move to page 29, beginning with parks, personal services, subtotal $201,095. Councillor Green.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I see special motor equipment operator two not funded. But then funding for heavy special motor equipment operator, is that just a different, is it just a different language?
No, it just depends on the licenses they have, and sometimes the employees transfer from one division to another. So last year, a special in parks transferred to a different division, so that's why, you know, that shows as vacant right now. So they were, he was replaced with somebody who has a heavy special.
Okay. So your two went to zero now, but then two in the heavy special motor?
Yeah, we still have the same number of employees. It's just a different mix of licenses.
Okay. Thank you.
Councillor Beazell.
Thank you. Lenny, I remember when I was on the parks board, we always were asking for summer help, and I see the cemetery has $31,500 for summer help. Under parks is temporary laborer. Is that summer help, or is that...
It's a combination of summer help and the people who work all year round on a part-time basis to open and close Clogsall Park.
Okay, so do we have extra summer help to help them cut the grass and keep up with the parks?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions regarding parks personal services? Seeing none, we'll move to parks expenses for a subtotal of $58,950. Questions from councillors? Seeing none, we'll move to snow and ice on page 30. We have a subtotal of $450,000. Question, Councillor Dina Tally.
This is probably the most difficult account to forecast, probably the most difficult account to forecast, because no one can predict the weather, not even those who are trained to predict the weather can predict it very well sometimes. While I'm pleased that the administration has added 50K to this line item, last winter was eye-opening for me. It was the first real mild winter we've had since I've been here. Typically, we spend at least $900,000. I think the average over the last eight years has been almost a million a year, average. We spent $650,000 this past winter, which was the lowest in over a decade, and that got me to thinking, and in preparation for this meeting, when I got the package, that what that tells me, and should tell everybody else, that this budget, snow and ice, I understand the state allows us the deficit spend, that doesn't mean we should, but that this budget should be a minimum every year of $650,000, because we just went through a very mild winter where there were a lot of nuisance storms, but nothing really major, maybe a few here or there, and we spent $650,000. So this account's always been budgeted at four. It's now $450,000, which is better than four, but after this past winter, I am convinced that we should be budgeting these accounts at a minimum to cover us through a mild winter, a minimum. And this does not do that. It's a step forward in the right direction, but it doesn't come close enough. I would ascertain that this is underfunded by at least $200,000, possibly more, likely more. So this is an area where, this is a budget where we know with certainty, while we don't know with certainty what the total will be, we know with certainty that at a minimum it should be at least $650,000. So this account, in my opinion, going back as far as I've been here, has been underfunded by at least a quarter of a million dollars. Now it's $200,000. So we're all, we all know this will use free cash next year. That's a guarantee, but it would make more sense budgetary, planning-wise, if we added more money to this account to get it to a minimum level. It's not even at the minimum. Hopefully, next year, it'll be 500, maybe next year after that, it'll be 550 or 600. This is like the opposite direction of what I was talking about overlay last night. We should be incrementally increasing this account as much as we can, up to around 600 to 700, and keep it there. The more we put in there, the less we got to worry about later on out of free cash. So I think that that's the baseline for this account, the floor, and we're $200,000 short. So just something to ponder as we go forward, that this winter was a good indicator of what we need at a minimum for a light winter. Thank you.
Councillor Green.
Lenny, my question would be under snow and ice equipment rental. FY '15, $700,000 requested this year, $150,000, mayor allowed $120,000. What exactly are we renting, or is that the contracted services for our plow guys?
Yeah, it's the private contractors who plow for us.
All right. And is, are we not employing or contracting as many of those, or because it was a light winter, we didn't need that?
Yeah, it was just because it was a light winter, we didn't need them too much this year.
All right. And my final question is, where are we in sand? Are we still using the airport road pit, correct?
Yes, even though FRA owns it now, they let us mine sand there.
Okay. And what's the longevity or the, what's the lifespan of that going to be?
As long as FRA allows us to use it, and as long as you've got good quality sand, so it might be two or three years, it's hard to say, but the day is coming when we won't be able to... be able to use it anymore.
All right. Well, I mean, you know, we talk about the landfill filling up, so I just want to get a sense of where we are, if we have to start purchasing sand, if that lot is becoming, you know, diminished over time, of course it would, but just looking ahead on when, you know, when that could be. So you're thinking at least two or three years out? I mean, I know it's tough, depending on the weather and everything, but two years for sure?
We hope, knock on wood. I mean, last year, we thought we were getting near the end, because there was a lot of clay in the sand, but this year, we hit a good vein of sand, so it was much better quality than we've had for a while. So that was a good sign.
All right. Thank you for that update.
Counselor Beazall.
Thank you. Lenny, do we have, in Public Works, we have a capital plan for equipment like snow plows and all that. I know that a couple of years back, we got some, you know, brand-new plows and this and that. And, you know, a lot of times, we hear from residents that, you know, well, it's not done fast enough for this and that, but, I mean, you're only going to be as good as your equipment. So do we have a plan in place for future spending for equipment?
I mean, we had a capital plan, I don't know, whenever it was, five or six years ago. You know, it hasn't been updated in a while, but Gary has his wish list that we use one of this money available.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions from councilors regarding snow and ice? Seeing none, we'll move to Public Works, traffic signals, again, on page 30, for a subtotal of $90,000. Counselor Green.
Traffic signal maintenance, zero. But traffic signal equipment, $25,000. So how are we maintaining the traffic signals that are in poor shape now?
DPW took over the traffic signals just last July 1st, from the Building Department. It had always been their job to take care of those things, but, you know, after their wiring inspector retired last year, who used to do a lot of the work personally, it transferred over to us, so we have an on-call contractor who does it now. So I'm just trying to, you know, we had two different maintenance items that, you know, I was just trying to combine into one. And I also wanted to try to distinguish between equipment and maintenance. This year, we were very fortunate, because not much of the equipment just broke down, you know, due to lightning strikes or whatever happens out there. And we didn't have too many cases of uninsured drivers or hit-and-run drivers knocking down traffic signal poles or control boxes. So as a result, we're able to address some of the backlog from past years.
Okay.
So, for example, the signals at Putnam and Boulder had to be completely rewired, because, you know, they were literally held together with duct tape, and, you know, the lights were frequently breaking down. So we got that completely rewired this year. And we kind of held off on a lot of the other projects, not knowing how many emergencies we had. But since things went well, we're taking care of a lot of the other issues that should have been done a long time ago, especially on the pedestrian lights. You know, that was kind of a lawsuit waiting to happen. So today, they were working on the one at North and Main Street. Last week, they took care of the one at Putnam and Boulder. Pretty soon, they'll be doing the ones at Mechanic and Main. And if we have money left over, we'll take care of Morin Square. A lot of these locations had, you know, the poles got knocked down years ago, and there was just a base sitting there for a long time that was a tripping hazard and everything else.
Right. So that will be the contracted service, the maintenance line item will be part of that to take care of the traffic signals. Correct? Is that how I'm reading it? It'll just be under contracted service maintenance?
Yes. And depending on what the situation is, it might be equipment.
And again, it's even more impressive that the department, which is down five employees due to work comp, is able to get all the work done, including the backlog on traffic signals. So again, I applaud your efforts, and I applaud your efforts of your employees. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Joseph, did you have any further questions regarding traffic signals? Seeing none, we'll move next to water enterprise, beginning on page 49. Thank you, Commissioner Laxo.
Thank you.
Shift the line. Good evening.
Good evening, councilors.
Counselor, it's my mistake, page 50, beginning with personal services expense, for a subtotal of $1,581,469. Questions regarding personal services? Seeing none. Counselor Dana Tally?
Too fast, right?
Yep. Is there any new employees in this budget?
Just the business manager, who we're referring to. We've increased our contribution to the civil engineer position, as we expect he'll be doing more work for water. Before, it was mostly budgeted by wastewater with their projects. And the only other one is, we do have a temporary position in for David Berger, the distribution system manager, who's going to be retiring in February. And we'd want to get somebody in a couple of months ahead of time to train with him. He's a very valuable person in the department, and really holds everything together, as far as everything in the distribution system. So we want to make sure that we, you know, don't have a gap there at all.
So what's the short answer? The short answer is, we have a third.
Of the business manager.
And that's it.
Yes.
The business manager position, who, what will they be, who will they be benefiting most? You, water, wastewater, DPW?
I would say mostly wastewater and DPW.
So why are you taking a third of it?
To assist me in some of these areas with revenues and projecting, and with grants and things like that.
But you just said that they're going to be servicing mostly the wastewater and...
Right. But I expect that part of their time, they'll be spent assisting me in those areas.
I'd rather that position be, well, I'd rather not have it at all. It's one of the reasons why I'm not supporting this package, but I think it doesn't belong in water. I think that was a way to spread the benefit, but I don't know how we can quantify what benefit water's going to get versus wastewater or DPW, outside of water and wastewater. I don't know how we're going to quantify that. So...
I mean, you know, between water, wastewater, DPW, we have a $22 million a year business. And, I mean, between Jeff, Lenny, or I, none of us are business professionals, so it'd be helpful to have somebody with that area of expertise. And I know with myself, there's no water quality manager, there used to be, and I'm getting pulled in many directions in some of the areas that I am lacking in, is actually in the business management aspect of the whole operation, so.
So I understand how this is being sold, like every other position we want to add in this city. There's 40 million reasons why we need it, and there's no reasons why we can do without it. So I get, I stipulate that we're doing a disservice if we don't put the position in. But you know, from the discussions we had during the water rate increase, I made the comment at the meeting that I'm not going to support any new hires in these departments if I vote for this water rate increase. I never voted for the increases before. I did this one time, because it was a very good presentation on what that money was going to go towards. And then when I got this document, and I saw that even a third is going up, I got upset about that. Same with the wastewater, because the wastewater's rates, the water rates, are a structure that's in place for a specific reason. It's a specific reason we were given when they were sold to us. It was not to hire more people outside of your, I'll call them foot soldiers, the guys on the ground, okay? That's at least how I interpreted it. What bothers me about new people and people in water or wastewater is, I hear from you all the time how short-staffed you are, and yet, we're going to have you pay 30 grand for a business manager's position, who's not going to be doing anything with the water operations, who's, may not even give you a third of the benefit. So I would be upset if it was an extra lines guy, because I said it before, I'll say it again, the water department can't afford their operations as it currently stands. We had to raise the rates to fix the infrastructure, start fixing it, totally understandable. And a lot of people who called me about it were very understanding about that. They said to me, you make sure, counselor, that they spend that extra money on the system, not hiring more people. So... But to add insult to injury, it's not even, it's not even a staff person that you can put out in the field. It's, not to diminish the, it's a desk job.
I mean, some of the things that's going to be coming up is, I mean, you know, with the loans and things like that, plus, you know, just administering these projects, there's a lot of, you know, administration that goes on with the, I mean, we're looking at $10 million of work. I mean, nothing in the scale of wastewater in the next three years. But they'll be helpful in that area. And Lenny's very good about making sure, I mean, the new engineer has been helping water, you know, in a bunch of different areas. So I expect that he'll continue with that, and make sure that that business person will also be dedicated to water for that time.
Yeah.
And we'll be able to assign those tasks. Grants that come along, there was a grant this winter about infrastructure. We'd like to get everything in our water system on GIS. And there was a grant that came up, and just because of what my, you know, what I had for work, and everything else that was going on, there was just no way to get that in, because DEP did send it out late. But that's the type of thing that, you know, the business manager, I expect, would actually, you know, pay for themselves by being able to pursue that.
I don't relish being against something that Mr. Laxo needs, or you need, because you guys answer the call all the time from me. You're the most called-upon people from my area of need for the residents. So it pains me to say back to you, I can't help you here, from where I sit, because you do so much for me, and by extension, my constituents. But it's just, it just bothers me. I can't, I made it clear a while ago, when we did the rate increase, that I wasn't going to support a single penny more towards personnel, until we have a structure in place that sustains the water operations to the point where you don't need to get rate increases as a stopgap measure to cover your deficits. I'm not against rate increases in general. They're necessary over time, but it's just hard for me to go along with it, it really is. And so you mentioned about how this person will assist with all these projects and grants. Has the city considered the fact that we have someone, we have a revamped purchasing office that may alleviate issues that have been going on in these areas?
Counselor, you're asking some kind of global questions.
Yeah.
I'd like to ask Commissioner Laxo to join Mr. Line, because...
Sure. I just, well, I mean, I'm hearing...
Position reports primarily doesn't...
I'm hearing the administration of procurement and going out to get things. You know, it's a statement. It's not a question. I feel that some of these problems may be rectified by a change of the guard that was taking place with purchasing, where you won't have to stress yourself out as much with all these things. I know wastewater's getting creamed. So I'm hoping that that would alleviate some issues right now. I would expect it to, before we see if we actually need this extra person. Because the way the public sees this, they don't care about what the benefit is. They want to understand why their bill goes up every year, and they're told the reason for the bill going up is X, and then the departments come back to us for Y and Z, that had nothing to do with X. That's where they get upset. Whether it's justified or not, that's what they get upset about. So even if it's justified, so I just feel as if the purchasing revamp will help out with these areas specifically, before we need to hire someone new. Just to see how it works. I may be wrong. This position used to be in service, right? And then it was removed?
Yeah, Larry Cassas did it part-time.
Right, yes, right. So he was doing it on top of his other duties?
Right.
Okay. Is there a reason why planning can't be utilized in this capacity like they used to be? Just a thought.
Yeah, I know they're having, going to have personnel changes there also, so I don't know what type of person will be taking Larry's place.
Okay. All right, I'm done for now. Thank you.
Counselor Joseph.
Email outlining the reasons why we couldn't get water mains flushed. And I'm assuming that's labor, distribution meters, watershed?
Yes.
That you're having. So out of those nine people, how many people do you have right now?
We have, we'll have four vacancies in the next week, because another person gave their notice, and they're going to Unitel, so.
Okay. So we saw...
To make that clear, we have eight people in distribution. And we had, the working foreman was out from, feeling medical leave for a while, off and on. He came back. But now, we're going to have four vacancies in distribution, so we're at half-staff, so.
Okay. So in your email, you outlined a lot of the reasons why you couldn't get people. What are you looking for, for solutions to fund, to get to this? I mean, you get $519,000. You say it's not enough, because people go elsewhere.
What we're finding, and Lenny's, you know, in the past has found us, is that other municipalities are actually paying more than us. We had a couple of people that, in water, I can't speak to Lenny's situation, but we had a couple of people in water, they got their licenses, well-trained, and now they left to go to Pepperell. And they became familiar with Pittsburgh's water system. You could send them out and do whatever, but they went over there, and now they're actually making $7 an hour more than they would have been making here in Pittsburgh. So it's pretty hard to compete with that. I'm not saying that we need to go up to that, but we need to look at some of that. And we've actually had a meeting lately with Bernie, Lenny, and the mayor about this, how we can, you know, figure out something to try to reduce the, you know, the departures, so. It seems like we're the training grounds, get them the license, and then they're gone.
Right. But you came to us and gave us a presentation on how expensive it was not to maintain our water system. And then, when we ask, when are you going to maintain the water system, you don't have enough people. So, I mean, we're funding you with nine people.
Right. And I'm going to get the hydrants flushed. I mean, we've just, we've had a tough spring with the departs. We also have a leak ongoing at our Oak Hill tank that's been a huge problem the last few weeks, as far as diagnosing it, locating it. And hopefully, in next week, we'll get that corrected. But, you know, once we've got beyond that, I've had to use those guys quite a bit up there to try to locate that leak, and we've actually have to have a contractor come in and excavate that. But we will get the hydrants flushed, and we're going to hire people. We have some decent applicants. They don't have any experience. I mean, not one of the applicants we received had a drinking water license, or did they have any type of excavating experience. So, you know, and we don't mind training them. However, we need these people to stay, because we have a couple of older people. Out of the four people that are left in distribution, one of them's 68, and one is 64. So they're near to retirement. So it's pretty hard to get this stuff done.
Yeah.
You know? So we want them to stay. And that's something we need to work on in the future. Is it going to cost a lot more money? I don't think so. We just need to make sure that, you know, we make some adjustments at some point here, so we can, we're not so far out of the ballpark in respect to other municipalities.
One thing we're looking at is training. You know, it is difficult to get these water licenses, and, you know, whether local vocational schools can handle it, or whether we should bring a trainer in-house, you know, and train people there. You know, we just have to look into those things, because it's a problem statewide.
Yeah, it's countrywide. And statewide, too. The state, a few years ago, about five, six years ago, changed the regulations, so that a water license for distribution, there's four grades, for treatment, there's four grades. They changed it, so before, you could just go take a D3, you know, which we are, or a D4 if you wanted to. Now, they require you to take each of the exams, D1, D2, D3, D4, and also take two classes, same thing with treatment. There's a lot of work involved. And it's not work, you just do it work. It isn't just experience. You have to do a lot of studying on your own. And, you know, one of the persons, we came, had come over from highway to water, when he realized how much work it was to get a license, he decided to go back during his probationary periods, and said, I don't really want to go through all those exams. After he took one in, you know, and found out, I mean, he didn't pass that one, but he found out how difficult they were, and how much times it involved beyond your workday to prepare for them. So the state, as a result, there's a severe shortage in operators drinking water with the proper licenses. So even when I was reaching out to private contractors, as far as getting somebody in for flushing, I was asking whether they were certified or not, and they said that they can't. Even when I was reaching out to private contractors, as far as getting somebody in for, for flushing, I was asking whether they were certified or not, and they said that they can't, they can't get certified operators, they'd have to operate under, you know, one of our, um, employees' licenses, so...
So, with the money that you're not spending for laborers right now, was, could you spend that for contractors to do this work?
That's the thoughts. Um, however, we need to, to shift gears, as I said in my email, to shift gears, we do have to go out to, to bid for that. Um, even if we do part of the system, so, and that's something I'll, gonna, you know, one of the topics I have with the, uh, new purchasing agents. Because we also have emergency water system repair contract, and I'd like to kind of change that a little bit, it's expiring shortly, so that we can have that um, possibility of having just people come in and help us with flushing and things like that, because it's not construction, it's maintenance. So, the salary, um, levels are a bit different, so...
Okay, thank you.
That's what I'm gonna have to do. I mean, I, I honestly, we, I have a problem. I mean, we have a problem, because it's difficult to, to get people there. You need people familiar with the water system. You can't just throw somebody out there and say, "Start flushing hydrants." You need to continue flushing in a certain direction. You don't want dirty water to end up in, you know, discolored water, end up in somebody's neighborhood. You need to flush and bring those to the end of the mains. Otherwise, if you just stop in the middle and don't bring those to the end, you're gonna have, um, a lot of complaints, and a lot of people would, um, problems, you know, damage, you know, laundry and things like that, so... Um, and we have an older system, and so we have to be even more careful of it, because even flushing a hydrant can cause a water main break. You have water hammer if they're not careful with it on a particular street, or you can cause backflows where you pull, if you, if you flush a hydrant too hard on a particular street, um, you could actually cause backflows and pull, um, contaminants in from people's houses or something like that, from their furnaces. So, you have to be careful, those type of things. It's not, it's not something just throw them out there, rip the hydrant, because i- if you're not careful, you could build, bring, you know, something into the, uh, water system that actually could end up, uh, affecting somebody's health, so...
Deputy Commissioner, along that same lines of Counsel Joseph's questioning, I, I wonder with the, um, with the available revenue, um, uh, from manpower, can we reallocate that to overtime, so during, you know, we have longer days this time of year, can we be, you know, expanding our operations into the early evening times to, you know, for hydrant flushing as well?
And that's, and that's what I... The pro, the Oak Hill tank, I, I don't wanna go too much on that, but it's been a huge problem the last four weeks. That we've really had a lot to deal with, we've done a lot of excavating and searching, trying to find that problem. We've had outside people look at it, and we can't locate the leak, it's going out to the golf course, we need to get that corrected. And then the next thing we will do is look at using those, um, monies and, and expand that, and pull some of the other guys, you know, in the media department, talked to them already about, you know, starting flushing with that. We'll get them flushed. And we got about half the system flushed last year, and if we hadn't had so many water main breaks last year, we would have got it all flushed. Having said that, we worked through the whole winter, um, on hydrant maintenance. One of the problems that we found with, with flushing is that we weren't getting the hydrant, and, and this is a complaint from Chief Roy, and I agree with him a hundred percent, they can't even get the nozzles off the hydrants. We actually had to cut them off, um, either with a saw, or take them off with a torch or something like that, so we were doing that all winter long. I mean, we've done more hydrant maintenance in the last year than has been done in the previous five years. I mean, I have the records of it, if anybody wants to look at it, but we have. Um, and they've worked really hard at trying to fix a lot of these hydrants. I mean, we have six pages that we've gone through. Um, that'll make it easier to flush, because right now, when we were flushing last year, there are a lot of hydrants that are, that are breaking, and the guys are having a hard time getting the nozzles off
Yeah.
and lubricating them, so we're not, it isn't like we're ignoring them, we're working on them, and anything that comes in that we know that comes around, I made it a priority to make sure they get those fixed. Um, we'll get them all flushed this year, and then next year, it's gonna get easier, as long as you keep doing them each year, so, um, I mean... And, and we'll, we'll get it done. I mean, I, I can assure you that, so...
Thank you. Counselor Beazall.
Uh, thank you. Um, so the business manager's job, and I know that's, we were talking about before, so at work, we do like a gap analysis where we list all the functions of the jobs. We actually list when the people are gonna be leaving, so we're well-prepared in advance. So, for example, I could tell you, um, if my people are gonna be ready in six months to a year to replace the particular person above them that might be leaving, six months to a year. Is that, is the business manager, do any of that forward planning when it comes to, um, employment of people?
I mean, that's something that we hadn't really considered for the business manager. It was mainly, you know, looking at the financial and business aspects of the different DPW divisions, you know, as opposed to the human resources or employment staffing issues.
Okay. I think, you know, so it gives the people incentive to know that, hey, I started off here, and in a, a year, I could be in this position. And i- it works because everybody can actually see the forward progression.
Yeah.
And then hopefully, if it works correctly, you're filling from the bottom, and everybody filters up to the top.
Right.
So that when people leave, you already have people who have been training in those positions.
Yeah, and that's, that's what my goal is, um, with the hires, that we want people to, and I want to keep them there, so that we are, we are anticipating quite a few retirements in the water department. And we want them to have the knowledge and skills and licenses to be able to move up into those positions, so, I mean, that's what we're trying to do. Unfortunately, some of them don't wanna wait that long, a couple left for more money now, rather than, you know, three or four years down the road, so, um... You know, that's, that's one thing that we're, we're fighting here, so...
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Green.
We, as a municipality, have a, uh, you know, a do-not-compete clause in their, in their hiring process that, you know, they would be obligated, especially if we're providing the training, obligated to stay with us for X number of years. Employment back to us.
That would be pretty tough, I don't know. That's nothing I could answer, I don't think.
Oh, maybe that new business manager can. I'm just, I didn't know if that was, if that, if that, in fact, is doable in municipality employment, I don't-
Yeah.
I'm not sure, but I'm sure somebody would want, would want to be compensated if you're gonna tie them down.
I mean, we, I have, I mean, constantly, and I'm sure the operators do too, I mean, some guys just wanna stay working here, but, I mean, it... People are doing mass mailings for open positions all over the state and New England. Anybody with a drinking water license, they'd get the, the, uh, license from, you know, the list from the state, and just send out mailings, you know, open positions, and, you know, that's part of it, you know, um... Luckily, we have people that, you know, that, that actually wanna stay here, you know, that wanna, you know, work for the city, um, or, or, you know, realize there's other benefits to it, you know. Which I try to point out to some of them, it's like, you know, this is, the quality of life of working for the city is actually pretty good. Maybe the pay's not quite as much, but the quality of life is, you know, as far as other time, because they do get quite a bit of time off, is a plus, so... But I don't know if we could do some type of, I mean, that'd be pretty tough to do.
Right, thank you.
Just remind Counselors, try to, wherever possible, stay, uh, keep, restrict your questioning, uh, to specific budget, um, lines. Uh, that said, unless there's any further, uh, questions regarding personal services expense, we'll move on to water enterprise expense with a subtotal of seven hundred and twenty thousand. Questions from Counselors? Counselor Dean Tally.
Just a general question about enterprise cuts. If there are any cuts ever requested and approved by the council, where does that money go? Does that, I know it doesn't leave the water department or the wastewater, because they're their own entity, so, and it has to be a balanced budget, so... Where would they go? Would they, would the mayor have to submit an order to move it somewhere else? Or would it be within the city's legal right to have a reserve fund set up in the budget under expenses?
The money stays within the, uh, water enterprise. Actually, at, at year-end, the budget is really out of the picture, and, and all we do is we take our actual, the actual revenue and the actual expenditures, less the actual expenditures, and that's your new balance forward.
Mm-huh.
Um, the key with the budgeting is that the department is limited to not overspend under the, you know, the total line item in each, in each category. So, if you, if you reduce expenses by thirty thousand, the department is bound by the six hundred and ninety thousand. So, if they needed- In, in, on the, on the expenses.
They're, they're bound by that bottom-line number, even with the cut-
Right, by the mayor and the council, by the council. And if they needed more money, they would have to come back, like any other department, for approval, to spend more.
Okay, 'cause, 'cause sometimes when I entertain cuts for areas like this, it's not to remove the money out of water, it's to reallocate it to something that you may need it more for. So, I remember your predecessor very often would come before the Finance Committee for a transfer for, uh, contract services. Uh, I think it was either contract services or overtime, it was one or the other, where we had to move money out of overtime to contract services or vice versa. And I just want, I, I'm not gonna propose anything, but just for my own edification for the expense side of it. When I look at the Enterprise Fund for Water and Wastewater, I say, "Well, how is the money being allocated within your expense accounts?" So, you don't have to come before us for a transfer. Um, so I just wanted to point that out, because I remember in the past, when counselors have requested cuts in water or wastewater, you know, the department heads would get all skittish and concerned, but I never really understood why. It's not leaving them, it's just could that money be better used elsewhere in that, in that area? Um, if you know you're going to always overextend yourself on contract services, why don't we budget that accordingly and not put the money somewhere else, so you have to come before us and ask for more money? That's all. I- it's more of a general comment about the expenses of water and wastewater, uh, because I, I could make a recommendation on several of these accounts for a cut, but I don't wanna cut it out of the water entirely, you can't. I'd rather see the money moved elsewhere. But we can't move the money, so it's kind of not really, it's kind of pointless, but I'd-
I have tweaked it a bit, I mean-
Yeah.
hydrants, I mean, we, we had, um, like fifteen thousand or something like that allocated. I've actually upped it to twenty-eight, because we're spending a lot on hydrants, so, I mean, I have reallocated, um, some of those, uh, those line items.
Okay, good, thank you.
Counselor Joseph.
But I would also think that if, if we cut, if we cut his budget by a hundred and six thousand dollars, then and he was able to run to, to that budget, then he wouldn't run a deficit this year of a hundred and six thousand dollars, because his, his revenue is a hundred and six thousand dollars less than he plans on spending. So, if we were to cut the budget by a hundred and six thousand dollars, and he was able to maintain that budget that was cut, then we wouldn't run a deficit. Wouldn't that be the- That's correct, Counselor. Um, whatever the deficit would be, it's one hundred and six if it's untouched. That, uh, is, um, in the council order, that relates to this budget being passed, it, it actually, um, is a charge against the available funds, so are the retained earnings for that department. So, if, if you cut so much money, then we would charge that much less to the, uh, to the retained earnings. That's why I was surprised when Counselor Dean Tally had highlighted issues within the wastewater that would equal the one point one million, why there wasn't recommendations for cuts in that area. Because if that, if the cuts were made, then it would look like we're taking less out of, as a deficit, which would mean any ideas that they had to do a, a rate increase because they were running such a high deficit would be a mute point, because there really isn't that high a deficit. So, that's why I was, I was wondering why the other day there wasn't recommendations for cuts when there was highlighted areas that could have been cut. And then again, if there's highlighted areas in this budget that could be cut, um, because they're not running with what they are actually using, then I, I would think that that would come out of the deficit. Again, that's our money. As a, as a rate payer, that's our money. That's all.
Counselor Green.
My question would be, um, distribution system repairs. FY sixteen budgeted fifty thousand, and actuals as of five nineteen, thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and one. Requested ten thousand dollars moving forward, so are we not... What are we lacking in the distribution system repairs that we can go from fifty thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars?
I've actually reallocated that to hydrants and also, uh, to coal patch. Um, distribution repairs was sometimes paid out of that, so I just, um, we've got a couple of line items, we really need to simplify the budget. That, distribution repairs, we also have piping. I just reallocated that way, so the overall is the same, but I'm actually in the areas that we're actually spending, um, out of it. Because we have a con, it kind of doesn't make sense in some ways, because we have a con, we have distribution repairs, we have piping, which is water main, we have hydrants, we have coal patch, asphalt for, for doing, and we have contracted services, so we really, that, I left ten thousand in there, but the reality is that it should be just contracted services, and then piping and things like that, so...
Okay, so moving forward with next year's budget, you'll-
Yeah, I think it'll just, just to simplify things, and Dick has actually asked us if there's line items, um, it just it's kind of like six and one and a half dozen other, but, I mean, if we're doing distribution repairs, if it's a contractor that's coming in, it comes out of contracted services. If we're doing the repairs ourselves and buying piping, it comes out of piping. If we're fixing hydrants, it comes out of hydrants. Distribution repairs, it just, it's kind of, I did, I still left ten thousand, I probably should have just got rid of it, and then, and then redistributed between contracted services, hydrants, and, you know, repairing trenches, so...
Okay, and then the line item ran into that watershed maintenance. Um, FY sixteen budgeted thirty. Um, actual use as of five nineteen, fourteen thousand and change. And do you plan on using fifteen thousand dollars in the next couple of weeks?
Um, not this year, but there's some stuff that we really need to do in the coming fiscal years, as far as maintenance of the, the dams and, uh, some of the, uh, right-of-ways for the transmission main from Meeting House. Something I would have liked to have done this spring, but, um, it's something that needs to go through purchasing, and with their workload, I knew that we, uh, wouldn't be able to get through it this time.
All right, so there again, just tidying up the wording, maybe watershed maintenance is different. But I heard you say dam repair, but I know that I saw a line item for dam somewhere on here.
Yeah, for actual repairs of dam, but the watershed maintenance, we consider, you know, like mowing of the dams, mowing of, uh, right-of-ways
Yeah.
um, where the water mains are. And when I say mowing, um, we have an excavator come in with a boom-mounted brush cutter, and they'll actually cut
Yeah.
trees and everything else, and it's something we really, it's kind of, kind of got away from us the last few years, and we really need to do that, because the, for example, the transmission main from the Meeting House reservoir down to, um, the regional plant, the trees are now four to six inches going over it. We need to go through there, um, and just mow it all back, so if we do have a break there, we can access it. And then hopefully, you know, if we can regularly mow it, we won't have to bring an excavator in, but right now, it's gonna be an expensive raw position, so...
Right, 'cause it does, I mean, again, we hear this every year, that it's easier to put aside, do the maintenance on it
Yeah.
in the course of the year, rather than skipping a few years, because then trying to catch up, right?
You know, we're in a different situation with different scale of equipment, so...
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Dean Tally.
Counselor Joseph raised an interesting point. Now, on the wastewater, I didn't recommend any cuts, because the waste, wastewater has continuously ran a deficit in the millions because of all the projects they're operating under. And the rate increase structure they imposed years ago, that they will continue to be imposing, is to bulk up the retained earnings to cover that fiscal deficit every year. That's why they raise the rates for those projects. I mean, I looked through their budget, and I didn't see a lot of, I, I saw some areas that were suspect with projections that I learned later on may not have been the case, but there are areas you could reduce, but it wouldn't cover the entire problem, and that was known since day one, why they were gonna run a deficit every year. With the water, I see it a little differently. We're talking a hundred thousand dollars. So, I have to say, he's right. I mean, there is no reason why we should pass a budget that shows a deficit before we even started. I agree with him. I think, I think this council should challenge itself to cut a hundred and six out of this package. I, I know, I know I'm gonna hear how that's detrimental, but the counselor's right, Mr. Dline. I, I hate to upset you about it, but we know it's a deficit right now. How can we pass something that we know you're gonna go under the red on already?
When we went through the, the rate study and the rate increases, this was actually projected to be the deficit for this year. Um, and then next year, we would get it back up to five hundred thousand and made it, maintain it five hundred thousand for, for the rest of time. We knew that this year, we didn't want to impact people so much, and we spread out the rates. So, we knew that this year, we would have, um, a deficit, and it would have to come out of retained earnings, and that's what was passed in the original, uh, if you look back in the water rate, um, increases. And then, like I said, next year, with the next increase, we're gonna return that money, keep it at five hundred thousand, because I think we talked about that was a good amount, just keep in there, and then go forward, we'll maintain that amount, unless the catastrophic happens, and all additional funds will go toward, uh, capital.
So... Counselor to my right was correct in his methodology, but, and I do recall that, so thank you, but... So, you're saying that in FY eighteen, this department will go back, how mu, how much is in retained earnings?
It's five hundred and forty-one thousand. This is the chart, this might be, this is the chart from the, the rate increase.
Yeah, okay, so it's five forty-eight-
Five forty-one.
Five forty-one in there right now?
Right.
And is that, so that five forty-one is gonna be reduced by what we're projecting is three twenty-nine?
A hundred and six thousand.
Oh, no, so the five forty-one is with the three twenty-nine deficit for this year?
Right, right.
Okay, so we'll go down to five forty-one, then we'll go down to, uh, uh, four thirty-five- four thirty-five, and then you're saying in FY eighteen, it's gonna go back up to over five hundred thousand?
That's what we budgeted, to put back up to five hundred thousand and maintain it at that. And then any additional funds, there's not gonna be changes in the budget. That money will go toward capital. We'll have about, instead of three hundred and fifty thousand, we'll have five hundred thousand next year. And then the following year, there's one more increase that's going through, and we spread it out. I mean, we could've all front-loaded it and not had to take any out of retained earnings, but we spread it out to reduce the impact to the rate payer, spread it out over three years, ease them into it, basically, and what we knew was gonna happen, that we're gonna have that much, I was correct, is a hundred and seven. I have is a hundred and six, so.
So that, so what the water's doing is what the wastewater did. And, and the way they do it is, they knowingly, they know that they're gonna run deficits multi-years under their current rate structure, so they raise the rates to get as much cash as possible, and, and then they backfill the expenses with the rates they raise to cover the deficit they're running. That, that's how they're doing it. So, um, I guess the reason why it always confuses me with these packages is I'm assuming that the rate increase is in the revenue number. So the revenue number that we're showing includes the first year of that increase, and that's not enough still to cover, make you whole for FY seventeen.
And we, and we could've made a larger increase here this year, we just wanted to.
Did it phased in over a five-year period?
That's why we show deficits, because we did phase it. If we had moved it all to the, and front-loaded it with a larger hit like wastewater did, we wouldn't have to have that, you know, taken away from the retained earnings.
So I think it's, I think it's imperative on the city's part that at the end of every fiscal year, the council receives a simple report through an email or public record document that says, through the end of fiscal year sixteen, wastewater has X amount in retained earnings, and their, their cumulative balance right now, deficit or surplus, is this. Same with the water, same with the airport. So we have, that may even be helpful in this package we get every year, to show in this section where you are now. And I, I see the projection, and I, I'm a little skeptical of the projection, because I'm looking at the status C through mid-May, and it does show, projection-wise, you're gonna come in, your expenses and revenues are gonna be within a couple hundred dollars, which is pretty tight, obviously, but your expenses, I, I agree with on, well, your revenues I agree with. You're, you're trending at five three one five. I have five three five two, so it's within forty K. The expenses don't make a lot of sense to me. I, I feel the expenses are listed, they're about three hundred K heavy, because you're running right now at five three five one, and your revenues are running at five three five two. That's within a thousand dollars. That makes more sense, so. Your expenses to date do not jive with what you're saying it'll be at the end of the year.
You say it where have a surplus?
Well, I'm not saying it's a surplus, I'm saying you're gonna break even. So I'm not getting why this says, well, I'm, I'm not, shouldn't say I don't get it. I'm just saying that the data as it's presented to us through their budget reports does not substantiate you're gonna go in the hole three thirty. It says you're gonna be, break, break even.
And we do everything we can control spending during the year. I mean, heating was one thing. We saved a lot on heating this year. A surprising amount because of the mild winter, sometimes heat change, so. That's one area that we're actually gonna underspend. But the goal is to, to reduce how much we take out of retained earnings.
I understand.
We have a budget, and I'm gonna spend X amount of dollars, but if I can save any money during the year, I'm gonna save it. I mean, that's, that's the goal. I mean, I'm running a business. If, I mean, if something costs us a little less than we thought, then great, we're gonna save this money, and it's gonna go back to retained earnings, and we're not gonna have to take so much, and then there's gonna be more for capital.
What, what I'm trying to get across, Mr. Delain and to everybody else, is this is actually good news if this is the case, because the five forty-one oh one three is with the three twenty-nine being taken out of it. If we break even, that number's gonna be more over, that number's gonna be close to nine hundred thousand in retained earnings. And then next year, if we use the one oh six, let's say, it'll go down to eight hundred thousand, which is well above the ten percent mark that some of us thought was acceptable, which makes sense to me, because the rate increase was sold to maintain, to upgrade the system, not to increase operations at the water department. So my only problem with this page is it says we're running a deficit projected of three thirty, when the data does not support that at this time. I think you guys, do you know when this, these projections were made?
It was quite a while.
Quite, quite a while ago. So through mid-May, I'd like to say that this, this projection's three hundred K heavy, which is a good thing. So I just don't want that lost on anybody here, that we need to know at the end of the fiscal year what this is gonna be at, because this document is a public document, and I don't want the public to think, or the council to think, that we're running a three hundred and thirty thousand dollar deficit, and we're actually breaking even, most likely, with six weeks left to go.
Really, the bottom line is this is a business? I mean, I look at it as a business. If I can save money in any area, whether it's a little bit less on chemicals or find a better price and go on to get to chemical consortium, we could've done it where we've gone through the state con, combines, but it would've cost us more money. It's more work to go through the chemical consortium, according to purchasing, so that's where we go. I mean, I fought to save money in every single area. And the gentleman that's in charge of the treatment plants, he, he, he wants to use as little chemicals as possible in the water and still treat the water to EPA standards and better. And, you know, those are the type of things. We, we need to save money in every area, so we don't hit the retained earnings, so. I mean, that's, you know, I think it's a good thing, but.
Well, it'd be a very good thing, because it'd be the first time in five years you guys broke even. I mean, so I think you're over, I think you're selling yourself short with the document, but that's why I asked when would these projections made? If they were made four or five months ago, I understand you didn't know what you know now, but, um, I think it's a good story.
But having said that, I mean, we do have some problems at the Oak Hill tank that could hit us with quite a bit of money in the next month.
Understood.
Those type of things come up.
And, and that's why I didn't propose any cuts, because the way it's running right now this fiscal year, they're gonna break even. So I, so that's why I was skeptical about the next year, because it's a projection. We don't know what it's gonna be. Maybe it'll be better than negative hundred K. But.
I hope so. I hope we break in a little more and spend a little.
I'd like to see how next year goes, once we pose that rate increase, to see how they run next year. And then we can really take out the scalpel if it doesn't like, look like the way we thought it was going to. Thank you.
Any other further questions regarding water enterprise expense? Seeing none, we'll move on to water enterprise, regional water treatment expense, a subtotal of six hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Questions from councilors? Seeing none, we'll move to water enterprise reimbursement to city, seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Questions from Councilor Dean Tally?
Just very quickly, Mr. Sarazin, is that, that's the pension and healthcare?
That's a combination of our services that the city departments provide, fringe benefits, and, yeah, general insurance, retirement, yep.
And that's calculated every year to these?
It hadn't been for a couple of years. It was done this year, and, and also, we did take into consideration a small reimbursement or a credit to the department for the water they provide to city departments.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions regarding water enterprise reimbursement? Moving forward, water enterprise debt service totaling one million eight hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Questions from councilors? Seeing none, we'll move, lastly, to water enterprise capital expenditures totaling four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Questions from councilors? Councilor Dean Tally?
Is the water system improvement account going up two hundred thousand because of what we just did?
Yes.
Okay. And what will that three fifty do?
We're actually gonna use it to leverage more money. We're gonna have to, we're gonna borrow. Basically, for each million, we have to pay fifty-five thousand dollars in payment, so I'm gonna try to, as we get through the year, we may be able to pay some stuff out of pocket, but we gotta balance out. We're kinda looking at it like the River Street project. We have to do some contribution to that, which we weren't expecting, so. But it, it's gonna allow us to, that capital improvement plan that I had shown you, it would allow us to do that, so.
When, when, when do you believe you'll start on your first project in that area?
We're gonna do a lot of engineering this winter. You know, one of the highest priorities is SCADA system, computer system at the plants. And then next spring, I wanna break on the water main project, where we do a couple miles where the, get the worst areas done, so. That's, I mean, it's a lot of work, and, you know, that's one of the reasons we need good people, because, you know, even with contractors, you still need people to operate valves and let them, you know, show them where things are, so. And losing a couple senior people over the winter months will make it a little bit tougher, so.
Thank you.
But we're gonna get it done.
Thank you.
Any further questions from councilors regarding water enterprise capital expenditures? Seeing none, I will conclude water enterprise. Thank you, Mr. Delain.
Thank you, Counselor.
Councilors, next, we'll move to city clerk, beginning with page seven. Good evening.
Good evening.
Finally, on the other side of the table.
I am.
We'll begin this evening with city clerk personal services with a subtotal of two hundred and seventy-six thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars. Questions from councilors? Seeing none, we'll move next to city clerk expense totaling five thousand three hundred and ten dollars. Questions from councilors? Seeing none, that will conclude the city clerk expenses. Move next to elections. Election personal services with a subtotal of fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Questions from councilors? Move next to election expense totaling twenty-four thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Seeing no questions, we'll then move to license commission, also page eight. License board personal services, six thousand two hundred dollars. Questions from councilors? Move next to license board expenses, three thousand fifty dollars. Questions from councilors? Seeing none. Councilors, I apologize. I skipped over inadvertently, uh, city council. The convenient irony. Move next to city council personal services, one hundred and ten thousand dollars. It's on page seven, by the way. Questions from councilors? Move next to city council expense, subtotal twenty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Councilor Green.
Just a point of clarification. I know that last year, we increased the amount to education and travel up to fifteen hundred dollars. And have we exhausted that account through our fiscal year?
We've spent about thirteen hundred dollars.
Okay. Again, I, I did participate in seminars last year, so I, I do enjoy that. Thank you.
And I'll just add to that point. There was actually additional requests from councilors for additional professional development and travel opportunities that unfortunately couldn't be accommodated with only two hundred dollars remaining. Unfortunately, we'd exhausted our funds there. Just to provide additional context of, you know, if additional funding was available, probably would've been used up to approximately two thousand dollars this year. Moving forward, Councilor Joseph.
Can you just remind me as to why advertising went up double the last year than it was the previous two years? Was it code changes?
It's all dependent on how many ordinances are passed, because they all have to be advertised. And some of the lengthy ones can run three thousand dollars. So it's all dependent on, on what comes before the council. This was a pretty, pretty big year.
Yeah.
For advertising, yeah.
Okay.
You'll say, Counselor?
I'm just, I'm just wondering if in the future, if there's ordinance changes that pertain to particular departments within the city, if they, if they would be billed for the advertisement as opposed to this account being billed for the advertisement? I mean, if we're doing an ordinance change on the parking or the different things that might relate to different departments within the city, if we could charge other people for our code, for code changes that they initiate?
It's a thought. Maybe we could talk about that.
Throwing it out there.
Councilor Dean Tally.
The office supply account, is that account supplemented for the city clerk's office? Is that, do you, do you, is your staff use that account?
It's all interchangeable. I mean, we're just one office.
Right.
You know, we try to break it out. We, you know, things that are very definitely specific to city council, obviously, get charged to that, but, I mean, it's just, it's.
Yeah, I didn't know what people, I actually had someone ask me this a couple of weeks ago. They said, you guys have your own office account? I go, news to me. Not, not the account here, but I meant, no, we don't, we don't have like a storage room where we go and we ask the city clerk's office to buy us pens, paper, and all that stuff. It's, it's for her staff to do city council business, which they do a lot of, so that's what that is. Thank you.
In terms of supplies that are furnished to us, the only thing we get are, are business cards, especially once a term, is, is I think the extent of the office supplies that are extended to, to councilors, just to clarify that for the public if they're concerned. Councilor Green.
I know that I have used my fair share of liquid paper, so if I need to be billed for that, Anna certainly write me a bill for that. I'll, happy to provide you six little bottles of whiteout for every time you fix my paperwork for me, so. I appreciate the work that your office does for us as a whole.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions from councilors? Seeing none, that will conclude the budget hearing for this evening. I'd like to once again thank the department heads for joining us and spending their evening with us, in particular, the city clerk, who spends just about every evening with us these weeks, so. Motion in second to adjourn. All those in favor? All those opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, councilors.